Lights, camera, and lots of action. We're known as Tinseltown for a good cause. And at this year's State of the Entertainment Industry Conference, the prognosis looks good for our movie and TV industry. Anna Marcos reports.
The pulse of the entertainment industry is strong. That's the word from the movers and shakers as they meet for the annual State of the Entertainment Industry Conference in Hollywood. Among those making it strong, TV executive producer Chuck Lorre, who's receiving the Commitment to California Award. He's behind mega-hit TV comedies like Big Bang Theory, Two and a Half Men, and his latest show, The Kaminsky Method.
I just put my 45-year-old daughter in rehab for the eighth time.
No! I don't want to be here!
Just keep going.
Everything I've done has been produced in Los Angeles. I've never worked out of town. The best crews, the best tech people, the deepest pool of talent across the boards here in Los Angeles. Why would you go anywhere else?
It's the kind of talk these people like to hear as Hollywood movie cranes and construction cranes ramp up. And in another piece of good news that helps stop runaway production...
We were able to obtain an extension of the existing California Film Tax Credit Program. Keeps the existing money in place through 2025.
Hollywood is the place where everyone wants to be, especially Netflix. How about Netflix, right? The streaming service will soon have more than 1 million square feet of office space in Hollywood.
TV host and comedian James Corden was hobnobbing with the heavyweights. And a panel of virtual and mixed-reality experts talked about how that technology is changing the industry.
What we're trying to do is bring consumers the ability to watch content on their terms and on their devices.
We're actually involved in spatial entertainment, where you can actually move your physical body and your physical presence around and in that story.
And in keeping with all this new technology, look at this movie-making platform that just came out this year by AR Wall. It actually substitutes the green screen, so you can move around in your virtual or augmented reality without having to replace the green screen later.
One of our goals is really, and this speaks to the spatial entertainment, is for people to literally be able to step inside our stories. And that's part of that spatial idea, where you are actually able to be in a world as never before.
Meanwhile, one of the long-term stewards of Hollywood's revitalization is retiring. Laron Gubler, from the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce, looks back on 26 years.
Back in 1992, Hollywood was a little scruffy. It was a difficult time. A lot of companies were leaving Hollywood. So we worked very hard. We created business improvement districts. We did whatever we could to address the issues of crime and grime and to see what's happening today is just amazing. And it's bringing back the wonderful, rich history of Hollywood.
Among his victories, the Hollywood and Highland Complex, the Dolby Theater, the Academy Awards coming back, and now more TV and movie production than ever. It seems Tinseltown is regaining its place as a star.
Thanks, Anna. That's great news about Netflix expanding locally. Now tell someone at HQ I'm ready to binge on more episodes of Black Mirror over the holidays. Please and thank you. LA is not just a movie town. We're also seeing an incredible resurgence in the art world. Opening only two years ago, this downtown art gallery is fast becoming a hotspot for international talent. Rasha Goel gives us a tour of Hauser &amp; Wirth.
Hauser &amp; Wirth opened its Los Angeles location in March of 2016 in the heart of the downtown Los Angeles Arts District. The vibrant communal space links art and architecture while bringing together the city's diverse population.
Hauser &amp; Wirth is 25 years old. We started in Zurich in Switzerland. It's a family-run business. And we now have expanded globally and we have nine locations. Well, we've always had a relationship with Los Angeles. We work with some very important artists here. The owners of the gallery, Ivan and Manuela Wirth, would make frequent visits to Los Angeles to meet with these artists. And LA was one of their favorite cities.
The gallery is located at what was once the Globe and Grain Milling Company, a major flour producer. But that, of course, has all changed. This 6,000-square-foot area was actually all once cemented and even covered for more than 60 years. But by opening it up as part of this art gallery, they've added an outdoor terrace, a garden, and even brought in a native Southern California oak tree, which has helped enhance the ambiance.
This building was kind of a derelict building. It was unused. And its history was as a flour mill. But it had all of the elements that we were looking for. The skylights, the open space. We were able to create this interior courtyard that we can show sculpture. And it's an entire city block, so we could utilize the whole space with the restaurant, bookstore, and all of our exhibition spaces.
Some of the featured exhibits include...
We have a beautiful show of Alexander Calder's sculpture called Non-Space, which is on view in our south gallery and in the courtyard. We also are showing the film piece Manifesto, which is a 13-screen film installation. And then in this room, we have Analog by Zoe Leonard, which is one entire work, over 400 photographs, that she took over a 10-year period.
Manifesto, making its West Coast premiere, features actress Cate Blanchett in an installation which pays homage to the beauty of artists' manifestos, ultimately questioning the role of the artist in society today. You'll also find Manuela, the onsite restaurant named after Manuela Wirth, one of the owners of the gallery. It offers seasonal, locally sourced produce, an urban garden, a chicken coop, and it's only located at the LA Gallery.
It really showcases her love of food and this kind of farm-to-table philosophy of really fresh, seasonal ingredients that is such a natural part of the California lifestyle, but it's also part of the gallery's ethos.
There's just so much to experience.
We want to create a space that's a destination, so people feel welcome and feel that this is a place they can come and spend time.
So come on down and enjoy some great art, good food, and engage in some creative dialogue. An entrance is free.
Check it out. And in case you missed the headline, admission is free 99. To plan your visit, check them out at hauserwirth.com. Curran Price gives us the 101 on affordable housing. Mary Garcetti hosts an Inside Mars Landing party. And we give you a taste of holiday cheer in downtown LA. All that and city beat.
Council District 9 recently held a community meeting to discuss the variety of affordable housing projects coming to the area. Councilmember Curran Price noted the importance of neighborhood residents knowing what to expect to take full advantage of the programs.
I'm looking forward to follow-up meetings where we can provide real information to neighbors and friends about how to apply, how to be eligible, and how to get into the affordable housing projects.
The California Science Center opened its doors to the mayor and Los Angeles students wishing to view the recent Mars landing by NASA. For decades, exploration has largely consisted of new Earth or planet surface discoveries. Making students aware of the current Mars mission shows them a whole new world of possibilities, literally.
So it's real people working in teams on ginormous science fair projects to get them excited about these as actual jobs here in Southern California.
Angelenos enjoyed a beautiful annual holiday tradition: the lighting of the Grand Park Tree. Thousands gathered at City Hall to soak in a little holiday spirit, enjoy some holiday brass, and express compassion for those in need.
Our fires have left many people homeless and destroyed many of their possessions that bring them comfort and cheer this time of the year. So while we're happy and cheerful, let us never forget those who needed a little extra cheer this year. And hopefully, all of us can help provide that to somebody.
And go!
There you go! All right. The festive season has begun downtown LA.
The LA Zoo is one of our local treasures. And for their fifth year, they're getting dressed up for the holidays with the spectacular LA Zoo Lights. Michael Hernandez got a firsthand look, including a meet-and-greet with four of Santa's reindeer?
Lights, lights, and more lights. It's Zoo Lights at the LA City Zoo, where visitors are treated to quite the show in a very unexpected place.
There is something so magical about the zoo at night. Seven weeks of nights to invite all of Los Angeles: families, children, couples on dates, friend groups, to come explore the zoo. It's adorned with these very creative light displays that are inspired by our animals and nature.
This event started back in 2014, and it's now in its fifth year. Dodger third baseman Justin Turner was one of several grand marshals to officially turn the lights on and invite the public in. The zoo has four of Santa's reindeer available for everyone to see and a reindeer keeper to answer questions about reindeer.
They make a clicking noise. So in the song, "Up in the Housetop, Click, Click, Click", it's actually the reindeer making that clicking noise. There is a tendon in their foot that goes back and forth that makes that clicking noise. And they use it for the blithering storms they cannot see. So they listen out for that noise.
With 14 different light displays and the very popular Twinkle Tunnel, which was extended this year.
The Twinkle Tunnel was amazing. Yes, it was so beautiful. We're familiar with the zoo. And so we knew that every year they do Zoo Lights. And this was our first year experiencing it.
LA Zoo Lights runs nightly from 6:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m., now through January 6th. For LA This Week, I'm Michael Hernandez.
As Michael mentioned, LA Zoo Lights runs through January 6th. Make sure to check it out. More info at lazoolights.org. A local craft fair gets a little renegade. Echo Park celebrates their diversity. And we have details on how you can get involved in the 2019 Homeless Count. Check out things to do.
The Renegade Craft Fair returns to the State Historic Park in downtown Los Angeles. Join LA's vibrant community of designers, makers, dreamers, and doers as they celebrate 10 years of creating unique and exciting works of art. Explore an array of installments, textile works, and handmade crafts made by local artisans, and all designed to elevate your contemporary craft experience. Artisanal food, great music, and good times await for the entire family to discover. Renegade Craft Fair is happening December 8th and 9th, 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at Los Angeles State Historic Park. Echo Park brings on the fun with its annual community parade. This year's parade theme is celebrating the cultural diversity of Echo Park and is set to happen along Sunset Boulevard between Vin Scully Avenue to Park Avenue. Parade floats and entries will include classic cars, spectacular performances by community groups, and of course, Santa and His Elves. The parade promises to continue a decades-long tradition of community spirit and wondrous merriment. The Echo Park Community Parade happens December 8th, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Check it out online at echo park community parade dot com. The 2019 Homeless Count Volunteer Drive has begun. Each year, the city needs the help of more than 8,000 volunteers to canvass more than 80 cities and 200 communities across LA County. It's a program that helps our officials and communities better understand homelessness in our region and to direct resources where they're needed most. The count is scheduled to take place January 22nd through the 24th of 2019. If you'd like to get involved, register online. Theycountwillyou.org. And that's a look at some things to do.
Our beloved Dodgers came this close to a World Series title for the second year in a row. Well, forget about it, because we're celebrating the boys in blue with their third annual pop-up museum. This year honors 100 years of the legendary Jackie Robinson. My man.
This is a very exciting day because we are opening our third annual pop-up museum here at the stadium. It's really fun because it's something that's not here forever. You only have a small amount of time to see it, so when you do come to see it, it's really special. This year, the museum is celebrating Jackie Robinson and his legacy. You know, it's his 100th birthday next year, January 31st, 2019. So the timing couldn't be better for a Jackie Robinson-themed pop-up museum. We do have some amazing pieces, including a Jackie Robinson jersey, a Jackie Robinson hat, and his bat.
I think it's really cool. Obviously, I've heard a lot throughout history of Jackie Robinson, color barrier. I've heard a lot from him about Fernando Valenzuela, Kirk Gibson's home run, Sandy Koufax even. So I think being able to see a bunch of the players and the different exhibits and a bunch of the artifacts from that is really cool.
Back in the day, my daddy used to drop me off at Dodger Stadium when I was 16. And I used to walk from Dodger Stadium all the way to Boyle Heights where I lived. If you're a diehard Dodger fan like I am and my son, take this tour.
Anytime that I get to spend with both him and top it off with our favorite team, makes it all the better.
We have our first class of Dodger legends, and that would be Steve Garvey, Don Newcombe, and Fernando Valenzuela. And it's really interesting because Newcombe has that connection to Jackie Robinson being signed by the Dodgers shortly after Jackie was. And then we have Garvey. Garvey was Jackie's Bat Boy when he was like seven or eight, when he was a little boy, which is really great. And then Fernando Valenzuela, who made a huge impact, similar to what Jackie did, but for the Hispanic community.
I believe Dodger blue. Like Tommy LaSalle said.
We're very proud to be the organization that helped break the color barrier in baseball and ultimately helped change the world as we know it.
That's going to do it for this edition. I'm Umayman Rashid. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org and check out our newest social media videos, LA This Minute. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Good morning, good morning. Uh, everybody, please take a seat. Today is Wednesday, December 5th. I want to welcome you to, uh, City Hall and to this Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Uh, Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you please call a roll?
Bloomingville, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Coetz, Kirkorian, Martinez, O'Farrell Price, Rodriguez, Rue Wesson, ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Coetz moves, Rue seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Buscaino moves, Harris Dawson seconds.
Mr. President, there is a request to continue item thirty-five B to January sixteenth.
Okay, so ordered. In fact, you know what I think I'm gonna do right now, Madam Clerk? I'm gonna jump right into, uh, our presentation for, uh, today. If, Mr. Englander? Uh, good morning, Mr. President and, uh, members. I'm gonna ask Mr. Rue to join me on this presentation. If I can get, uh, Jean and Laura and Pastor Boyd and some others to come up and surround me, please, come on up. Jean, you wanna? Good morning, everyone. Um, today is a unique and a special day. It wasn't too long ago that I was at an event with my dear friend Jean Kim and some of his friends and associates. And they, they came up to me and they said, "Why don't we recognize Koreatown on December eighth?" And I said, "Well, don't we already recognize Korean-American Day?" And they said, "Yes, and we love Korean-American Day, and it's a very important day, but let us recognize our home, our town, Koreatown, lovingly referred to as K-Town." And so then I started to do some research, and I think it's very appropriate that on December eighth, we recognize Koreatown. Because on December eighth in nineteen eighty, that's when the first boundaries of Koreatown were formed. And we're fortunate to have with us today, again, my dear friend Jean Kim and one of the founders of Koreatown. So let's gi- give Jean and all of the founders of Koreatown a round of applause. It's, uh, an honor to briefly, it's a lot to say, and I'm gonna try, Mr. Rue, to make it as quickly as I can, but it's a very important day. I don't want to miss anybody. I don't want to miss anything. I know I will, so I'm gonna apologize in, in advance. And I'll just say this quickly, as an aside, about Mr. Kim. The first time that I went to Korea, Mr. Kim put together the trip. And on that trip was the former president of this council, John Ferraro. And Jean took us to a tailor shop in a place called Itaiwan. The tailor was Harvard Taylor, and he made shirts for us. And what the tailor told me, whose name was also Mr. Kim, is that making a shirt for John Ferraro, that it was the longest sleeve that he had ever made in his career as a tailor. But what a lot of people don't know, in the early, the late seventies and early eighties, Koreatown was not the hustling, bustling part of town that it is today. There were a few merchants, and there were some property owners, but not a lot. And there were some Korean restaurants. The first Korean restaurant I ever went to was Wuleok on, on Western. And Mr. Kim and some of the other founders decided that they wanted to make Koreatown more than that, that they wanted to establish Koreatown. The price, that, that part of our city was in decline. The rents were low. The property was cheap. They had a handful of organizations like the Korean Federation and I think the Chamber, and there was a big senior citizen organization. Today, after they came together to, to create this area of the city, there are dozens and dozens of nonprofits that do everything from helping individuals get their citizenship to English classes, to showing people how to work with government. Back then, Jean, there really wasn't a high-ranking member from the Korean community that worked in City Hall. And today, because of the work in K-Town, almost all of our offices have representatives, representatives from the Koreatown community. The first staff member was a guy named Charles Kim, who eventually went out to help found KAC, whose wife was the first Korean-American woman elected to the California State Assembly, and she just narrowly, narrowly lost a race for Congress. The prices, the area that was in decline, now that area is booming and helping to carry the entire city of Los Angeles with it. Because of the renaissance of the Koreatown area, it has played a critical role to the city of Los Angeles as a whole. In fact, there are people that refer to Koreatown as Downtown West, because now we have a lot of positive development and things are going on. What has happened? Koreatown is now one of the most diverse areas within the city of Los Angeles, with a very strong relationship with the AME Church, and I'm proud to be joined today by Pastor Edgar Boyd, who's helped forge that relationship over the years. Organizations like the Latino Coalition and Ola to add to the numerous community-based organizations in Koreatown. And I'm just proud that it was the hard work by this man who came here, started with a small bookstore, began to bring people together, and now Koreatown, like I said, is hustling and bustling. Last Thursday, in the rain, and one night, I went to three Korean events that were both packed, one of which by, well, KAC, uh, by, uh, uh, Korean Federation headed by Laura Jung here, that you couldn't find a seat. Times are a-changing. The Korean community's gifts to the city of Los Angeles has helped make us the greatest city in the world, in my opinion. And so I could go on and on and on, but I do believe that it is appropriate that we recognize December eighth as the beginning. And what individuals from the Korean community are gonna do on, on this day and the next few days is they're gonna do outreach and community service. And so it's an honor to stand here today with my dear friend, uh, Jean Kim, who is lovingly referred to as one of the godfathers of the Koreatown, uh, community. So I'd now like to ask Mr. David Rue, uh, if he would say a few words. David?
Excuse me.
David, then you, Jean. And also, Jean, I had the honor of being the best man at, 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 at his wedding.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning, colleagues, and happy Koreatown Day. Not Korean-American Day, which we will celebrate next month in January to, uh, to recognize the first Korean immigrants to the United States, but this is local to Los Angeles, and only in Los Angeles do we have the original Koreatown. So happy Koreatown Day. Thank you, Council President Wesson, for, um, for recognizing this day, because Koreatown is home to thousands of Korean-American families and local businesses, and is known as the most exciting place to eat in America. Um, a bustling hub of entrepreneurs, artists, and community nonprofits. It is the beating heart of the nation's largest Korean-American community, and it's about time that we have an official Koreatown Day. When my family first moved to this country, Koreatown was a central part of not only my childhood, but, but for the lives of so many others. It's where we went shopping, where we went to church, and where I developed my sense of service to others. Like so many other Korean-American families, Koreatown was the springboard to a better life. And the restaurants, community centers, and churches were the support system that made that better life possible. It was not just because of all the Korean-Americans who lived there, but because of the incredible community groups and nonprofits, like the Koreatown Youth and Community Center, the Korean American Federation, the Korean American Family Service Center, Korean Immigrant Workers' Alliance, Korean American Coalition, and the list goes on and on and on. Some of these groups have been there since the beginning, and others rose out of the nineteen ninety-two L.A. riots to help rebuild. But both reveal the strength and the resilience and the resolve of the Korean-American people of Los Angeles to stand up and be counted. But Koreatown was not built easily or overnight. It took vision and it took courage of people like Dr. Jean Kim and many of the other first generations that are here, uh, today in the community, to build one of the most dynamic communities in Los Angeles and one of the most important neighborhoods to all Korean-Americans. As an Angelino who grew up in Kore- near Koreatown, I want to thank Dr. Kim and all the founders of Koreatown for giving me and this city a neighborhood to be proud of. Thank you, and happy Koreatown Day. Oh, wait, Mr. President, you asked me to recognize the hard job of recognizing the many organizations that are here, and I know I'm gonna miss some of the, a few. I mentioned some, but of course, we also have the Korean Council General's office, of course, Korean American Federation, Los-
We're fortunate to have with us today, again, my dear friend Gene Kim and one of the founders of Koreatown. So let's give Gene and all of the founders of Koreatown a round of applause. It's an honor to briefly, it's a lot to say, and I'm gonna try, Mr. Rue, to make it as quickly as I can, but it's a very important day. I don't want to miss anybody. I don't want to miss anything. I know I will, so I'm gonna apologize in advance. And I'll just say this quickly, as an aside, about Mr. Kim. The first time that I went to Korea, Mr. Kim put together the trip. And on that trip was the former president of this council, John Ferraro. And Gene took us to a tailor shop in a place called Itaiwan. The tailor was Harvard Taylor, and he made shirts for us. And what the tailor told me, whose name was also Mr. Kim, is that making a shirt for John Ferraro, that it was the longest sleeve that he had ever made in his career as a tailor. But what a lot of people don't know, in the early, the late 70s and early 80s, Koreatown was not the hustling, bustling part of town that it is today. There were a few merchants, and there were some property owners, but not a lot. And there were some Korean restaurants. The first Korean restaurant I ever went to was Wulayok on Western. And Mr. Kim and some of the other founders decided that they wanted to make Koreatown more than that, that they wanted to establish Koreatown. The price, that that part of our city was in decline. The rents were low. The property was cheap. They had a handful of organizations like the Korean Federation, and I think the Chamber, and there was a big senior citizen organization. Today, after they came together to, to create this area of the city, there are dozens and dozens of nonprofits that do everything from helping individuals get their citizenship to English classes, to showing people how to work with government. Back then, Gene, there really wasn't a high-ranking member from the Korean community that worked in City Hall. And today, because of the work in K-Town, almost all of our offices have representatives, representatives from the Koreatown community. The first staff member was a guy named Charles Kim, who eventually went out to help found KAC, whose wife was the first Korean-American woman elected to the California State Assembly, and she just narrowly, narrowly lost a race for Congress. The prices, the area that was in decline, now that area is booming and helping to carry the entire city of Los Angeles with it. Because of the renaissance of the Koreatown area, it has played a critical role to the city of Los Angeles as a whole. In fact, there are people that refer to Koreatown as Downtown West, because now we have a lot of positive development and things are going on. What has happened? Koreatown is now one of the most diverse areas within the city of Los Angeles, with a very strong relationship with the AME Church, and I'm proud to be joined today by Pastor Edgar Boyd, who's helped forge that relationship over the years. Organizations like the Latino Coalition and Ola to add to the numerous community-based organizations in Koreatown. And I'm just proud that it was the hard work by this man, who came here, started with a small bookstore, began to bring people together, and now Koreatown, like I said, is hustling and bustling. Last Thursday, in the rain, and one night, I went to three Korean events that were both packed, one of which by KAC, by Korean Federation headed by Laura Jung here, that you couldn't find a seat. Times are changing. The Korean community's gifts to the city of Los Angeles has helped make us the greatest city in the world, in my opinion. And so I could go on and on and on. But I do believe that it is appropriate that we recognize December 8th as the beginning. And what individuals from the Korean community are gonna do on, on this day and the next few days is they're gonna do outreach and community service. And so it's an honor to stand here today with my dear friend, Gene Kim, who is lovingly referred to as one of the godfathers of the Koreatown community. So I'd now like to ask Mr. David Rue if he would say a few words. David?
Excuse me.
David, then you, Gene. And also, Gene, I had the honor of being the best man at, at, at his wedding.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning, colleagues, and happy Koreatown Day. Not Korean-American Day, which we will celebrate next month in January to, to recognize the first Korean immigrants to the United States, but this is local to Los Angeles, and only in Los Angeles do we have the original Koreatown. So happy Koreatown Day. Thank you, Council President Weston, for, for recognizing this day, because Koreatown is home to thousands of Korean-American families and local businesses, and is known as the most exciting place to eat in America. A bustling hub of entrepreneurs, artists, and community nonprofits, it is the beating heart of the nation's largest Korean-American community, and it's about time that we have an official Koreatown Day. When my family first moved to this country, Koreatown was a central part of not only my childhood, but, but for the lives of so many others. It's where we went shopping, where we went to church, and where I developed my sense of service to others. Like so many other Korean-American families, Koreatown was the springboard to a better life. And the restaurants, community centers, and churches were the support system that made that better life possible. It was not just because of all the Korean-Americans who lived there, but because of the incredible community groups and nonprofits, like the Koreatown Youth and Community Center, the Korean-American Federation, the Korean-American Family Service Center, Korean Immigrant Workers' Alliance, Korean-American Coalition, and the list goes on and on and on. Some of these groups have been there since the beginning, and others rose out of the 1992 LA riots to help rebuild. But both reveal the strength and the resilience and the resolve of the Korean-American people of Los Angeles to stand up and be counted. But Koreatown was not built easily or overnight. It took vision, and it took courage of people like Dr. Gene Kim and many of the other first generations that are here today in the community to build one of the most dynamic communities in Los Angeles and one of the most important neighborhoods to all Korean-Americans. As an Angelino who grew up in, near Koreatown, I want to thank Dr. Kim and all the founders of Koreatown for giving me and this city a neighborhood to be proud of. Thank you, and happy Koreatown Day. Oh, wait, Mr. President, you asked me to recognize the hard job of recognizing the many organizations that are here, and I know I'm gonna miss some of the, a few. I mentioned some, but of course, we also have the Korean Council General's office, of course, Korean American Federation of Los Angeles, the Korean American Foundation, the Korean National Association Memorial Foundation, the Wilshire Center Koreatown Neighborhood Council, the Korean Patriots League, and we also have our, our neighbors and other ethnic groups representing other groups as well, such as the E-Bell Theater, the historic iconic E-Bell Theater, and of course, First AME Church. And I hope I didn't miss anyone. Thank you, Mr. President.
At, at this point, I think we want to bring up, to say a few words, the individual that was involved in the very beginning, Mr. Doctor, my friend Gene, we want to thank you for all of your work. Members, please, let's give a salute to Gene Kim.
For so long, I would like to thank our honored council members for their continued support for the ears to the Korean community and businesses. On December 8th, 1980, the Koreatown specific plan was approved by the city council. Thus, culturally and economically, this Koreatown area in Los Angeles has developed into a rich historical landmark where many communities come together to break bread, work together, and to pave the path to the future. I thank our council members, our Korean community, and the next generation for their commitment and efforts to continuously grow, develop, and dream together. Thank you so very, very much. Thank you.
If we could have Laura Jung say a few words. Laura?
Good morning, Honorable Council President Weston and council members. On behalf of the Korean American Federation of Los Angeles, I'd like to thank you for passing this historic resolution to proclaim Koreatown Day. Koreatown Day is about recognizing the history and significance of Koreatown as a social, cultural, and economic epicenter of the Korean-American community. It is also about embracing its diversity and multi-ethnic members. LA's Koreatown is the largest in the world outside of Korea. Korean-Americans from all over Southern California come to LA because of Koreatown. More than a geographical place, Koreatown is inseparable and synonymous with the Korean-American identity, linking our older and future generations. It symbolizes the Korean-American community and unites us as one. As we look ahead, CAFLI is working with preparing the next generation to lead Koreatown and to preserve our culture. On this momentous occasion, I'd like to give special recognition to Dr. Gene Kim, who originally planted, planted the seed for Koreatown on December 8th, 1972, the late council member David Cunningham Jr. for bringing forth the resolution to plan Koreatown in 1980, and the Korea American History Museum and Koreatown Day Committee for working with the city to pass this historic resolution. Thank you very much.
So is Grace Park, Grace, where are you from? The museum?
Right here.
Please, come on. I saw you earlier.
Yes. Very. Hello, it is my honor to introduce Pastor Edgar J. Boyd to speak about his things about Koreatown Day today, and to offer thanks from the Korean American History Museum for honoring us with Koreatown Day for the community. Thank you.
Pastor.
Yeah, please, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and all the members of the City Council of Los Angeles, and more particularly my councilman, Councilman Maurice Harris Dawson, and to Dr. Kim, and to Dr. Chung, and to the rest of the leaders in the Korean-American community here in Los Angeles. Fifty years ago, when this community back home was languishing and had a better idea and had a hope to find a better way of doing business and raising their families and expanding, extending their culture throughout the world, visionaries like Gene Kim left and came and took their place in cities like Los Angeles and others, particularly on the north, north and northwestern coast of this country, and now throughout the country of America. And they organized, they worked hard, and when I pastored a smaller church just down 79th and Western called Bethel AME Church from 1986 until 1992, just prior to the social unrest, I got a chance to be introduced to the Korean, Korean-American community and got a chance to meet Dr. Kim then, not knowing that we'd have a chance to stand on the same stage today and look at matters and opportunity from a different vantage point and celebrate it in a different way. They have persevered, they have been vigilant, and they have done nothing short of creating a miracle for themselves culturally, ethnically, economically, and other, and in other ways and other means. When I left in 1992 to go north to work in San Francisco, we had a rather marginalized Korean-American community struggling with organizations like K-Gro, Korean American Grocers and Retailers Association, and is grown now to a multi-placed, multifaceted economic engine. And when I left, they had flea markets, and they had small shops on street corners, but now they have galleries and great major banks throughout the area. And the swath of property from Crenshaw all the way down past Vermont, and from the, from the 10 freeway all the way up to Wilshire and points beyond that, are standing today as a tremendous testimony of their vigilance and their determination to prosper. And as they have prospered, there has been a residual prosperity for the city of, of Los Angeles. And the African-American community stands with First AME and saluting them for the great work that they have done and for the movements that they have started to adhere to the diversity and for the inclusion that they represent, and we're just happy. They have come from perhaps the smallest representation now to become the owners and builders of the highest building west of the Mississippi River called the Intercontinental Hotel, built by Korean Airlines. So it's just amazing what this community has done, and we stand today to celebrate with them in this great milestone. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, members of the Korean-American community.
Yes, representing the Council General.
Thank you very much. I'm Deputy Council General from Korea. I think today's a really historic moment for Korean-American community here. I'd like to thank you, I mean, for this great resolution. Somebody said there were huge challenges for Korean-Americans here, but I mean, with 42 then enduring belief, they helped this area to develop its city. I mean, there's modern and prospering communities. And I hope, I'm just the city of LA, provide further support for the Korean-American community to contribute the cultural diversity and economic prosperity to LA and beyond. Thank you very much.
Okay, and now, Gene, and if we could all kind of gather around. I'd like to present you the first-ever Koreatown Day resolution passed by the city of Los Angeles. Let's give him one more round of applause. Mr. President, thank you. Here, we'll go this way. Okay, members, and to all of the folk that are with us today, we have not actually started taking care of the people's business, and we did that purposely because we lost a, a great president, a great human being. So at this point, I would like to ask everyone to please rise for a moment of silence and reflection in honor of the first President Bush.
Move this out of the way again. Hold on. Yeah. It needed to be cleaned anyway. Okay, colleagues, let's go ahead and run through the agenda at this moment.
Mr. President, Items 1 through 8 are items noticed for public hearing.
Okay, then we'll hold those for public hearing. Next items, please.
Items 9 through 35 are items for which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for Items 9 and 34 have been submitted and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, colleagues, so we'll go ahead and take up those items now. Any specials?
Just a minute, there is an amending motion on Item 10, so that should be held on the desk.
We'll hold that on the desk for the amending motion.
And there are motions required for Items 35A and C.
Okay. Martinez?
Yes, on Item 35A, I'd like to move to reduce the lien to $66.85 and confirm the remaining amount.
Okay, and we'll go ahead and, and Mr. Buscaglia?
On 35C, ask that we approve the lien as listed on 35C. Thank you.
Okay, then those will be the order.
And council may vote on Item 35A and 35C.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and open the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
And then the remaining items. We can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. We'll go ahead and also move Item 9 forthwith. All right, next items.
Items 36 through 40 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, those items are now before us for consideration. We'll go ahead and open the roll.
There are cards on all those items.
Okay, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
We'll hold those for cards. And now we can go into public comment?
Yes, general public comment or items called special?
We'll go into the multiple cards first. Wayne Spindler?
Look at that, little, little midget. That's right. That's right. So again, thank you for starting my clock early without enunciating my numbers. See, there's gonna be a couple of provisions for so-called hate crimes. Now, the city attorney's office, and I want to thank Councilman Paul Krikorian for this, eh 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 eh, for doing this, because in the city attorney's office, they have a mistaken notion of what a hate crime is. So for example, in 2016, May the 13th, a little boo-boo happened outside here in the building. They illegally arrested me for a 422A. And again, I thank Mr. Sidilio, AKA Gil Sidio, for giving me these confidential reports.
I don't understand which agenda I'm on.
Well, it's on the hate crimes initiatives regarding the training of the city attorney's office, because they don't understand that when you give a hate crime enhancement, what the definition of a hate crime is. They have to evaluate a hate crime in time, place, and manner upon which statements are made.
So Items 1 through 8 are street lighting, and the rest don't seem... Okay, you're not on the items. Okay, go ahead and start his one minute for general public comment. He's been warned that he wasn't on the subject matter.
No, you, you little Hebrew cocksucker.
You're not talking to items under the purview. Now you're disrupting the meeting. Sergeants, please escort him out. He's not following the rules. Thank you very much. Goodbye, Wayne. Thank you. You're not talking about items under the purview of this committee. You're disrupting the meeting. Now you're continuing to disrupt the meeting. Sergeants, please escort him out.
I am criticizing an elected official on general public comment, Mr. Bobble.
Bye, Wayne. Thank you.
I have a constitutional right to...
Mr. Previn?
Eric Previn? If you don't want to come up, Eric, then we'll go ahead and forfeit your time.
So just for the record, Mr. Spindler is shouting on the way out. Mr. Spindler is continuing to disrupt the meeting. And he's still shouting as he, as he leaves, preventing us from continuing our business. Yes, Mr. Krikorian?
Mr. President, just for the sake of the record, Mr. Spindler, when he came in, was actually playing recorded noises during our moment of silence for President Bush as well, and has been disruptive of the meeting really since he walked in the door. So I just wanted, because that wasn't necessarily audible on the recording, I just wanted to make sure that was stated for the record.
Appreciate that. Yeah, we were trying to find and identify the individual doing that. We all heard it, so thank you very much for that. Okay, you can start Mr. Previn's three minutes.
Thank you. It's Eric Previn from Studio City, and obviously a measure of gratitude to the Mountain Conservancy, Santa Monica Mountain Conservancy, who are helping out with both the item that you tabled, Item 10, and also, I believe, Item 39. And it's all tied to the Taylor Yard G2 parcel, which I think is gonna be, I can't quite figure out how it is that we, it seems like we give, there's Proposition 1 money that goes... So again, thank you for starting my clock early without enunciating my numbers. See, there's going to be a couple of provisions for so-called hate crimes. Now, the city attorney's office, and I want to thank Councilman Paul Krikorian for this, for doing this, because in the city attorney's office, they have a mistaken notion of what a hate crime is. So for example, in 2016, May the thirteenth, a little boo-boo happened outside here in the building. They illegally arrested me for a four-twenty-two A. And again, I thank Mr. Sidillo, AKA Gil Sidillo, for giving me these confidential reports.
I don't understand which agenda I'm on.
Well, it's on the hate crimes initiatives regarding the training of the city attorney's office. Because they don't understand that when you give a hate crime enhancement, what the definition of a hate crime is. They have to evaluate a hate crime in time, place, and manner upon which statements are made.
So items one through eight are street lighting and the rest don't seem... Okay, you're not on the items. Okay, go ahead and start his one minute for general public comment. He's been warned that he wasn't on the subject matter.
You little Hebrew cocksucker.
You're not talking to items under the purview. Now you're disrupting the meeting. Sergeants, please escort him out. He's not following the rules. Thank you very much. Goodbye, Wayne. Thank you. You're not talking about items under the purview of this committee. You're disrupting the meeting. Now you're continuing to disrupt the meeting. Sergeants, please escort him out.
I am criticizing an elected official on general public comment, Mr. Fabel.
Bye, Wayne. Thank you.
I have a constitutional right to criticize.
Mr. Previn? If you don't want to come up, Eric, then we'll go ahead and forfeit your time. I'm not going to call you again. Mr. Spindler is continuing to disrupt the meeting. And he's still shouting as he leaves, preventing us from continuing our business. Yes, Mr. Krikorian?
Mr. President, just for the sake of the record, Mr. Spindler, when he came in, was actually playing recorded noises during our moment of silence for President Bush as well, and has been disruptive of the meeting really since he walked in the door. So I just wanted... Because that wasn't necessarily audible on the recording, I just wanted to make sure that was stated for the record.
Appreciate that. Yeah, we were trying to find and identify the individual doing that. We all heard it, so thank you very much for that. Okay, you can start Mr. Previn's three minutes.
Thank you. It's Eric Previn from Studio City. And obviously, a measure of gratitude to the Mountain Conservancy, Santa Monica Mountain Conservancy, who are helping out with both the item that you tabled, item ten, and also, I believe, item thirty-nine. And it's all tied to the Taylor Yard G2 parcel, which I think is going to be... I can't quite figure out how it is that we... It seems like we give... There's Proposition One money that goes to them and then goes to some of the environmental review for this project. I don't know. Congratulations. I would like to say that the L.A. Conservation Corps is partnering up with Blumenfield in his district, which is very, very interesting, because this is a group that is widely... They're helpful. You know, Micky Cantor, they help get people working and so on and so forth. The only thing that I find a little bit objection about the L.A. Conservation Corps is they also help during election time at holding debates, but they don't want to talk to anybody unless you happen to be giving them $100,000 like Blumenfield is here. So, you know, I just think that we should try to veer in the direction of having open and spirited conversations with all of the candidates when those things come around. And I know Blumenfield has been a leader on that. And that's why I'd like to extend a brief invitation to him to join Coretts and maybe Bannon, maybe Rue, out in Studio City. We're going to talk about the upcoming campaign finance ordinance, which people are very interested in. People are extremely interested in where we're going with that and what kinds of changes we might be making. Now, regarding CD14, where I did see Weezer earlier, I guess he may have stepped off, they are going to be engaging in a twenty-seven, almost $28 million design-build warehouse for the LAPD over at Mariana Avenue and Worth Street over in his neighborhood. Now, the thing about this one is, is that I guess GSD got on board and MFC. Now, they're going to buy this piece of property, which is a big... And ITA is involved, because ITA likes to take a look at that stuff. I don't know. That's a big number, I'll give you that, but perhaps it's in our long-term interest, or perhaps it's in the interest of the guy we're buying it from, not sure. For item number... Well, I can't say the number because I can't see it here. My eyes are not good. But we are doing some record disposition work for L.A. Department of Building and Safety. I just hope that we're not going to eliminate the little experiment we did where we were carting people up there for a lien evaluation.
I don't think that item is open for public comment.
I'm sorry?
I don't believe that item's open for public comment.
Well, let's dispose of those records then on the public comment of that, because it's not appropriate to be leaving records around where we're going after people.
Again.
Fair enough. I'm ready to go my general public comment.
So let's go ahead and start his one minute for general public comment.
Yeah, let's do it, Mr. Honorable. And I want to just say thank you for running a very interesting meeting this morning up in public safety, where it seemed, you know, like there was a big cloudy discussion about fire inspections and frankly, high-rise, there are fifty-five high-rises with the rent stabilization ordinance. And you seemed to be saying, "Let's shut the conversation." But then David Rue jumped up and said, "No, no, no, we want to keep it open. Let's note and file it, not receive and file it." He even had to flash the minority report card, which I don't even know about. That's how good you guys are at negotiating that stuff. But it was all, in my opinion, to gloss over what I thought was a very interesting meeting about upgrading the technology for LAPD as you go. You used to be a "we've got to buy this new equipment" kind of guy. We've got to give these officers the best stuff. Now, all of a sudden, you're a lease guy as you head out to be a lobbyist. So once again, there's a special election coming up, and special elections are the ones where most of the public matching money goes right out the door, because people are eager to get a good seat. You have triggered that special election by exiting to be a lobbyist. So I would ask that you and your group, Englander, Knobby, Allen, cover the damn costs of that special election. It's about $1.7 to $3 million. We would appreciate it in the spirit of getting back the $6 million from Axon, who owes that one to the public.
All right, thank you very much. Your time is up, and all your statements were false and incorrect, just for the record. All right, so next speaker...
Yes, I'd like to preface my statement with the fact that we need more speaking time. I shouldn't have to force a democracy, because I'm still protected by my constitutional rights.
If you could just speak on the items first, unless you want to just go into general public comment, we could do that as well.
If I... Well, yes, since I've already started relative to my general public comment, and then I'll breach the subject of hate crimes. Again, we need more time. You're legislating or you're running the city as if it is an aristocracy, oligarchy, or plutocracy in excluding the voice and the opinion of the working class. You're intimidating people that are not aware or that are not familiar with the process. We need more time to address the issue of the fact that H and HHH funding has not been used for the homeless and poor people. We need affordable housing, not the construction of condominiums and lofts. People in the street need housing first. Prioritize citizens, black people, poor people in the street. I know undocumented people that have jobs and homes and healthcare benefits, but there are poor black people, veterans in the street that are homeless and houseless. Something wrong with that picture. The priority should be given to citizens, veterans, black people, poor people, before people that have not been naturalized or born in this country.
Okay, thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
I'd like to speak on other items.
Yeah, we started your clock on those, but you went into general public comment. So, did you want to speak on those items specifically?
Yes.
Okay, we'll give you your time back, but you've got to speak on the items specifically, otherwise you've already concluded your general public comment. So you filled out cards again on items one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, thirty-six, and thirty-seven, thirty-nine, and forty.
Okay. Now, relative hate crimes, I'd like to speak in general of just what's happening in this modern technological approach to mind control, population, and depopulation.
Okay, so we're not on any of the agendas.
No, this is hate. These are hate crimes.
That's not on the agenda.
These are not of the agenda items.
It's not on the agenda.
No, this is the agendized items. I don't know if this is for the special, but these are agendized relative to the police, the hate crimes.
Yeah, but ma'am, we're not on those items, so...
Okay.
Okay, so go ahead and have a seat.
Hold on. You said one, two, maintenance of Willard Street. Okay. Relative to the maintenance of the community, more money needs to be input, especially in impoverished, black areas, indigent areas, not just wealthier...
Again, we're...
This is in maintenance, this is in sanitation.
We're going to have to ask you to go ahead and take a seat. Want to call the next speaker now? Yeah, thank you very much. We've got to call the next speaker now. Mr. Herman? Armando Herman, come on up. Okay, ma'am, you're disrupting the meeting. If you're not going to have a seat, we're going to have to ask you to leave. Okay, sergeants, if you can go ahead and help her out, please. Thank you very much.
And you need to invest the time and energy where the people need it. And stop bringing in illegal immigrants that are attacking black women, breaking down our communities, because they're under the orders of the Zionist Jews to displace...
So Ms. Audrey, please don't disrupt our meetings. Just quietly have a seat, please.
Have we not foreseen what the issue is in West Downtown Street? Have we not shunned the light in the protest of humanity? For we see that the homeless crisis of lighting is an improvement, but yet they're restricted to live on the sidewalk and streets, being homeless. And this falls under the Los Angeles Administrative fucked-up code of Proposition 218, white nigger.
Mr. Herman, I don't understand what agenda item you're on. Would you please make it clear?
Mr. Chair, would you please read out my items and hold my time, please?
No, I won't hold your time, because you're the one that filled out the items, but I'll go ahead and read them out.
And due to the circumstances of circumcision of those who were killed...
Ten, number one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, thirty-six, thirty-six A, B, C, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty.
Fernando Perez is not a subject of importance to you, because I, the American citizen, under the coalition of homelessness versus Weezer and Englander on the offer of a measly award and information leading to snitches get stitches. And we're not going to snitch and identify any white motherfucker who's out there killing Americans on our street. That's the concern I'm here to address. Let us kill more white motherfuckers in the street like the city attorney has proposed. This way, we can provide and offer another award in the death of someone by the name of Fernando Perez. This way, we can find a subject of rewardum complexities to provisions under Chapter 12 of fucking Article 1, Division 18. We want Bush to wreck the city clerk, to provide Bush and request Bush notices of Bush, 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 and every president to advertise the deaths of every individual in Los Angeles. And I'm here to support Bush. I'm all about Bush. Fuck you, Mike Fewer. Forty-two U.S.C., 1983, First Amendment. Thank you, Bush. I love Bush.
We seem to be repetitive at this point. Completely repetitive. So, no, you can't be repetitive. You're against the rules. Against the rules. So, we've got to follow the rules.
The issue here, fellow Americans, is to understand why we have politicians stealing your money. We have to address the issue as to why people keep stealing your money. Now, my general public comment.
That was your general public comment?
No, I find it at fault for this reason, why Mr. Wesson's son continues to chair himself in this counsel horseshoe when he's committed a crime. That crime is voter crime. Why? Because he does not want to live in a black community, so he goes and perpetuates himself to live in a white community, to be white. And that's wrong. If you're going to vote and lie, vote in your fucking daddy's house at 1965 Virginia Road. In addition to that, you know, I just can't believe mommy, mommy Martinez doesn't like churro burgers, because the churro on her burger is that she needs to go on a diet. Mommy can't keep dressing this way at council chambers, showing off her bush. I want support of more Bush, and mommy comes the biggest...
Your time is up. Done. Also, on item thirty-four, there's a vote miscalculation, so we need to record it as a Mr. Coretts is a no on item thirty-four. That does not change the outcome, so we'll go ahead and we don't have to vote on that again. Just correct it on the record. All right, Mr. Gus? Dan, did you... Oh, you've got just general public comment?
No, I don't. I have every item. Mr. Fabel, I have every item. I chose every item, and I can tell you what the comments are about the DWP GM.
Okay, go ahead. We'll start your clock. That's fine, no problem.
Why does it happen all the time, guys?
Go ahead, Mr. Gus.
I submitted my card to speak on every item, and maybe because I have the most read column consistently on City Watch, you keep somehow only getting the general comment, but not the topic. How is that happening in advance of my lawsuit, Mr. Fabel? Jesus. Item thirty-seven, the DWP GM, see, I'm prepared to speak on that. The GM makes $310,000 a year, and do you really need to give him another $10,000 when the people aren't being served well? And why is it retroactive to 2017? You see, I obviously chose this item to speak on, Mr. Fabel. Gosh darn it. Let people comment. You're giving the highest-paid employee in the city a raise retroactive in the department that serves people the poorest. It is unfair, it is unreasonable, and is symbolic of the waste you have in this city. Regarding number thirty-eight, if Mr. Wesson stripped Mr. Weezer of his committee assignments, it follows that he should not be making motions regarding life and death, murder rewards. He should be stripped of his vote here. I would be happy if Mr. Englander actually was the maker of the motion, but I object to Mr. Weezer, whose offices and homes were raided by the FBI, and you haven't said one word about it. I object to him making motions about life and death, murder rewards. He was asleep during the Koreatown presentation. Why is he being allowed to make motions when he doesn't even have a committee assignment? It is wrong, it is wasteful, it is corrupt. Item number thirty-eight, kudos to Mr. Sidillo, who's actually doing something good for the environment. It's something we can all get behind, and I'm surprised to see Englander as the maker of the motion, as the seconder on an item having to do with the environment, but good for you, Mr. Sidillo. And similarly, item number forty, Mr. Blumenfield. Why in the world is Mr. Weezer the person seconding this? He's under federal investigation. Anything with his fingerprints on it taints the item. It's a good item. I applaud number forty. Mr. Weezer's fingerprints and influence should be taken off everything. He has no committee, he should have no vote. I'll go back now to my general public comment. Council members, I have the most read column in City Watch this morning, because you are going to sign off on a multimillion-dollar settlement to a whistleblower first responder named John Vidovich. Watch, I predict it, Mayor Garcetti's spending a fortune to not give a deposition in the Vidovich whistleblower trial, going on right now in a hearing across the street. I predict you are going to sign off on a multimillion-dollar settlement for John Vidovich, because Mayor Garcetti doesn't want to sit for a deposition. And guess what? Mr. Vidovich is going to turn into the number-one source of opposition research for Mr. Garcetti, should he decide to run for president. And by the way, why is Mitch O'Farrell, who railed about straws yesterday, why is he using a straw as a coffee stirrer today? It was just papulum. It meant nothing. The guy who outlaws straws is using a straw today. Thank you.
Okay, for the record, it's a whistle. It's not a straw. All right. Just general public comment, yeah, one minute, thank you.
Thank you very much. This is a matter of principle. Today's the second day of fucking Hanukkah, and I ask all of our citizens, do not donate any money to these real or fake fucking Jews, like I, i.e. Mayor Eric Garcetti, and...
You're not under items under the purview of the council.
...Fewer. We are asking you not to send any money to the Jewish World Congress, the Jewish Federation, Anti-Defamation League, the Jewish Defense League, the Jewish Sanhedrin, the ACLU, the State Bar, the Jewish media, and the bisexual entertainment industry. Why? Because they have robbed middle-class America out of their homes, their bank accounts, and ruined their credit, and they've robbed them of their lives and put them on the street. Middle-class America, thank you, is homeless, impoverished, and living on the streets like I am. I had a home, I had a car, I had everything.
Please don't yell at the microphone.
And why am I...
Cut her mic, she's going to yell.
Without anything now?
Go ahead and cut the mic.
Because I didn't do it, they stole it from me. Why? Because you tend to become a whistleblower. This is what the Jews do to you. The fucking Jews don't want you to speak out against society.
Your time is up. Next speaker, please. Okay, you're disrupting the meeting. Sergeants, please show her out. Thank you. Please show her out of the meeting. Escort her out for disrupting the meeting. Jeff? Is there a Jeff? No? I think that was an error. Okay, so Ms. McAllister?
Okay, hello, everybody. Hello. Okay, now I'd like to speak first about item number forty. And I don't understand, we've got 94.4 million in the budget for cleaning up and things like that, but you have some kind of fund. You guys are creating hundreds of funds every year, and you're putting money in these funds. I don't know where you're getting it from, and then you're taking it out. That money should be coming out of these budgets, not out of some fund you've created, because we can't keep track of how it's being spent. We've got in the bill of streets and services 91.1 million. So these funds, I want an investigation. I found the funds. I know where they are, and I've read through them, and every year, you're creating more and more, and it's hard for me to keep track. See, I'm keeping track of this. Now, number... This guy... Now, number, this guy who wants to get this raise, it is pay raise, number 37 here, I don't know, how are you going to give somebody a retroactive raise from a whole year back? From 2017, we're almost ending 2018. You're going to reach back a whole year and give him retroactive money? And then give him all of 2018? This is crazy, at 2.5%. The reason I'm, I researched the budget all the time is because this is my money you're giving away. See, when I spend a penny and you're misusing it, when I pay my taxes and whatnot, I take it personally when it's not being done or used correctly. That's why I'm all, I read the budget just like my Bible. And so, I want you guys to do the right thing because the FBI is on your trail, and based on my sources, the FBI is looking at the whole council. Because I don't think Weezer should be the only one that goes down. I came in here when you gave him a $34 million approval to fix up that building on Seventh and Wall, and you know darn well it don't take no $34 million to fix up a building. So, you guys, this finance committee should go down with Weezer. You are encouraging them to do wrong. I don't think he should go down by himself.
All right, thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Herman? I've already warned you. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, go ahead.
Turn the mic on, please. I'm a teacher, and last time I was here, I talked about the scam that's going on with the retirement system with teachers. And I have the documents for you here, like someone to take them. And let me quickly tell you what's this scam, how it took many years for me to figure it out. They wouldn't give me the information, but I finally got the information. When a teacher starts teaching, before she gets into, or he gets into, the teacher's retirement plan called CalSTRS, California State Teachers, they have to go into PARS. PARS is a public retirement fund. After that teacher gets into CalSTRS, all money to PARS should end. So, what they're doing is taking the money out of the teacher's paycheck, putting in CalSTRS, and funneling it into PARS illegally. The money that was taken out is embezzled. So, if the teacher had $400 taken out for retirement, that's embezzled. They send the whole wages back to PARS. PARS takes 2.35%, and then they give that to the teacher. When the teacher retires, they don't have enough service credits because all service credits were wiped out. And I've outlined it here. It's all in this document, eight pages, and I've got 35 copies.
Thank you.
Bring someone over here, please.
Your time is up. You can go to the side.
I can also teach a course.
Thank you, your time is up. Thank you, next speaker, please.
Okay, I'm waiting.
Jaclyn Richardson?
This is in regard to two cemeteries located within 10 blocks of this facility here. The first cemetery, they're both located within buildings. One of them is near Pershing Square Park. It has about 14 floors to it. I don't know how many of those floors are being used to house bodies. The second facility, legal or illegal, they're still in that facility, about, both of them are within 10 blocks of here. The second one is at a church. It's a Catholic church. It's right in front of the board of supervisors, and these bodies are below the floor legally or illegally. I don't know what the rules are in regard to burying bodies within the city, but these, both of these facilities are located within 10 blocks of this building here.
Okay, Barbara? Is there Ms. Barbara B.? No longer here, okay. So, that concludes all of the public comment. So, we're going to go ahead and close public comment and general public comment. We can go ahead and vote on item 10. Please open the roll.
And, Mr. President, on item number 10, amending motion 10A, has been posted and circulated.
Great, very well. Okay, so, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Thank you very much. Items 1 through 8. A fourth with per Mr. O'Farrell, without objection, that's the order. Thank you very much. Items 1 through 8. We'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
And now, we can take items 36 through 40. We can go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Is there any?
And council has motions for posting a referral?
Okay, those are posted and referred. Thank you very much. Any announcements, colleagues? Seeing none, do we have any adjourning motions? Looking to my right. Seeing, no, we do have one, yes. If everybody can please rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Harris-Dawson?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn today in the memory of Dr. Loretta Jones, affectionately known as Nanny. She passed away on November 22 of this year at the age of 77 after a long and painful struggle with cancer. Dr. Loretta Jones is truly a pioneer. She is the founder of an organization called Healthy African-American Families. It is an agency that works to keep families together that are facing the ravages of poverty, addiction, community violence, and trauma. Dr. Jones is best known for pioneering with local scholars at Loyola Marymount University and later Harvard University, the concept of community participatory research. And so, this notion that when you go out and take a community survey about what's going on, that that data can actually be used by an accredited research institution and validated as peer-reviewed research swept the entire nation, beginning here in South LA, but also in the San Fernando Valley. That's why I first met Jerry, was doing community participatory research around liquor stores and tobacco advertising. And so, she served with the Obama administration, Obama administration as a member of the National Institute of Health Institutional Review Board, received many awards and commendations. She leaves a daughter and three grandchildren, and the community will feel her loss and her contributions for generations to come.
Thank you for adjourning her honors. With that, that concludes this meeting. We are adjourned. Thank you, be safe.